I send out, you know, I took your advice and I send out, because originally I was just emailing you. And I send an email to.
Everyone.
Everyone. And I, and so I think it was, I forget what it was. Uh, Wednesday, uh, I had an interview with Mr. Richards. He came by and, uh, the week before that, Mr. Klein, we had assumed me.
Well, he was a tough one to get. You got him, you didn't get it.
Really?
Yeah, he's, he's doing.
He told me he was at Shreveport and going back and forth. No, I, but yeah. And, but yeah, I really appreciate it. And since we're kinda in a time crunch and everything, if you don't mind.
Yeah, cause let me know as soon as you get, you reach your limit, cause I gotta, I need to try to be someplace like four if I can get there, so.
Okay, okay. Um, so like for example, uh, how is the tax rate? Talk a little bit about how the tax rate is set and the importance of, of the tax rate.
Okay, that's a long question. So. You have. In an ideal world, you have a budget, you said, you go out to everybody, what do you need? What do you need, what do you want? And then we try to fill needs and see what wants can adjust. You get a certain amount of expected expenditures. And that's gonna sit hopefully what you need to get. The tax rates, the revenue side. So you have to try to figure out, the first thing you have to do is find out what's your tax base. In Pine Tree, we're not like Longview, where they have continuous growth and all the, you know, commercial. We're a little bit more bedroom community and you do have fluctuations, say in mineral values and things of that sort. So each year, the appraisal district comes up with an estimated values. And in our case, our fiscal year is July 1st. So we don't have certified values till July 27th. So we have to actually guess what we're doing when we adopt a budget in, in June. You have to adopt the budget based on what you think you're gonna do, based on estimated values, which. The actual tax rate, there's caps from the state on how much it can be.
There's recent caps from HP3, right?
Uh, actually, however many years back, they started the compression and then they changed it. And then each year, they kinda come up and massage it a little bit and they come up with different numbers. And they come up with different, Austin gets in the way a lot. But it's supposed to be local control, but they're really in the way. There's, there's a whole bunch of things they do.
Well, especially with this new HP3, HP3 is, I know is very broad, but specifically they, they, they limit the, from what I understand, they limit the, the powers of the local. School districts to, you know, brought it down to a ninety-three percent cap, they kept it ninety-three percent. And then changed the, the gold and the, and the copper pennies.
Yeah, and all that gold and copper and all these silvers. I mean, each year we go to training on them and each year I kinda listen to some of it and kinda let it blow away. Because I'm actually am kinda into the financial side of it, but it's so restrictive. And then they come back and they have whole harmlessness and they have things where they have unfunded mandates. And, and then they throw in how much the state's gonna pay for different things. And of course, in a school district this size, there's all different pots, because there's federal money and there's state money and there's local money. And, and so by the time you get finished playing around, it's. You really rely on your superintendent to control your costs. You, you kinda have, there's a little bit of, there's a little bit of faith that goes in behind. Because the tax rate's kinda gonna get set, uh, the, the tax rate is both M and O, maintenance and operations, and then INS. And then the INS is absolutely set on.
Debt.
The debt, well, it's the debt, you, you have a certain debt payment you have to make. And then you have a certain tax value. So when you actually get your certified values, then you equate back your numbers. And I think in our case, it's like thirty-four cents or something like that. That's not one that's messed with by the state. The state messes with the other one, with the M and O number. And that's where, you know, it used to be, I'm gonna say, it was a dollar fifty back, the first time I was on the board. And then it's kinda compressed to like, I don't know, a dollar thirty-five, then a dollar fifteen.
So gradually went down, went down.
Well, they, what they're supposed to be doing is they're supposed to compress it so that the local people aren't paying as much. And then they fund it back with state money. So back in the old days, eighty percent of your funding came from local. And now it's.
So you're trying to equalize that, but do you see, do you see the, the funds getting a little bit more lopsided to the state? And is that going to potentially affect school districts where they might mandate certain programs, but not really fund them?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's part of, I think, the, the grand plan, I think, is for people to get more and more rely, rely on the state. And then the state is already telling people, for instance, I've told a couple of the legislators. You guys are just trying to make people not get on school boards. I mean, every time we turn around, there's more things that we have to do, we can't do, more training, more of the INS life. You know, it's hard enough to get people to be on a school board that don't have an agenda. And so that's one of the issues I have, is you wanna get people that are good people in one circle, right? Where you really care about the kids, care about the taxpayers, care about the staff. Instead, you end up getting people that, oh, we need to have a winning football team. You know, whatever their, whatever their pick thing is. Because they don't look into how much of a strain it is. Uh, there's, there is a lot to being on a school board as far as the, the demands of. And then each year, they add more and more, uh, say, training, you know, every, okay, now I have to have this training, I have this training, I have this training. And that's fine, but some of this training is kind of.
And the training, uh, is a result of all of the new, newer changes.
Some of it is, and some of it's reactions of people that are concerned about things that very, there's, there's some really good training out there. And then there's some training where you say. And, and I'm spoiled, I mean, you probably know I'm, I'm a retired engineer or a devastator for a long time. I had a lot of training. Some of the training I had was training, like, I mean, you're a science teacher. I don't have to learn chemistry every year. I mean, I learned a lot of chemistry way back when and I do have to refresh myself every now and then, but I don't have to go back every year and study.
Right.
You know. Periodic table or something. I mean, it's just, you, there's certain things that, okay, I learned that, I'm good.
Right.
Uh, but in the state's world, you get it every year, like cybersecurity, you have to have that every year. Okay, I'm an engineer, tell me about cybersecurity.
I know.
So those are the kind of things that, uh, so, but I think the state gets to do more and more of that, because they're funding more.
Exactly.
You can't lose, you can't not do stuff.
That's, that's the, that's the, the downside to more state funding. With, with more state funding, there's more strings attached, automatic.
And, and that, to me, is a concern, because our strength is local control. You know, there's five school districts in the city limits of Longview, and every one of them has different values. That's gives the people, um, your choice. I mean, there's people that live on the other side of Longview that come to Pine Tree, because they want our values and vice versa. If you have a one-size-fits-all, like you do in, say, Houston or Dallas, where.
They're huge.
It's huge. Then, to me, I don't know that every, I, I think everybody loses, cause, you know.
And that's, that's one of the reasons I'm thinking, I don't know, uh, they tried to do these, these, uh, you know, charter schools and this and that, from the same, just to have variety and, and. But at the end of the day, they're still funded by the same.
Well, kinda, yeah, the, 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 I mean, the charter schools are trying really hard to get that same money. And that in and of itself is, is an issue, because the problem, and I, I don't have anything against charter schools, I'm into competition. My problem is charter schools don't have to take anybody.
Okay.
And so we have some students that, you know, we get, say, five thousand dollars from the state for that student. And that student costs us three hundred dollars to serve us.
Yeah, they don't pay, they don't play by the same rules.
We have some that cost us a hundred thousand dollars, but we still get five thousand dollars. Charter schools won't take that hundred thousand dollars, but they'll take that three hundred dollars, you know, and they'll, and see, that's not, to me, that's not right. Okay, if you're gonna, if you're gonna play that role, you're gonna play that game, then you need to play by the same rules. And if somebody wants to go there, then you have to take it.
That's right. Um, let's see. Uh, well, my next, my next question was, uh, how, how, I think we were touching the HP3, how it changed the, uh, but. But basically, you, you know, what was interesting to me was you, you said that, you know, HP3 is the newest kid on the block, but that's been going on forever.
That's at least twenty-five years that I can picture. Like I said, I remember way back. I, I, the first time I got on the board was nineteen ninety-seven, I think in nineteen ninety-eight, they changed the form, so. Uh, if, when I'm.
So this is like, like, nothing.
Everybody comes on, they're, you know, they got this grand idea of how they're gonna fix things. But the problem that they have, they're trying to fix something they don't understand. And, and I, I don't mean to sound like I'm God's gift or anything, but I've been doing this long enough. We all know, everybody that's in education system knows. The problem with public education system is we have families that are not in a position to be able to help their child. In the, and you've got some kids that they go home and, you know, say, have two parents. And they're able to help them with their schoolwork, they have internet, they have a computer, they have everything. Then you have little Johnny, who, if he goes home, mom's the only one there and she's working two jobs. So she's not there to help him with his reading or his homework with, with the science. He may not even have access to internet, he doesn't have a device. He's got a, a smartphone that doesn't have that, uh, plan. That, that child cannot compete at the same level with these other ones. So what we have to do is address the societal issues.
The poor issue.
Yeah, it's, it's, it, the, the digital divide, everything that causes, and the bottom line is, back however many years ago. You know, eighty percent of, and, and I'm gonna say poor, it, it could be minority, it might not be minority, but it's basically poor. They had two parents. And now eighty percent don't have two parents. And that's an issue, because we've worked really hard in the last few years to get male role models. In particularly some of the, uh, demographics that really need a male role model. Because those, they, they have to learn some of the values as far as how do you study? You know, why, why do I need to study? I remember, and, and, and as you can tell, I digress really much, but I remember, I'm gonna say thirty years ago. I did, uh, junior achievement and I talked to some seventh grade students. And one of the girls, she's, was gone, we'd already lost her. She said, I don't need to learn any of this stuff, I don't expect to live past eighteen, I'm, I'm done. Why are you, why are you wasting my time? I don't even know why I'm at school. And I talked to the teacher later and he said, we've already lost her, we can't, we can't, we can't break through, because her world. What she, what she sees is not what we see. And so she doesn't see a future, there's no need to learn any of this stuff, she's already gonna be in the system or dead. And so once they have that vision, it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. And so the, the societal problems have to be addressed, which is why I get excited about what I see at our elementary campuses. The, the, and you take somebody like Mr. Conley. What he's projecting of, you know, your, your expectations, you know, what's your, you know, your self-worth. I mean, all those things, those kids have to see to be able to be successful in this school and in the next school. I don't see the state addressing it. I see the state worrying about things that.
They, they use the, uh, the Band-Aid mentality instead of going to the root cross.
Right, right. They look and they say, okay, you know, our scores aren't good, we need to do something. No, it's, it's, God, it does, I worked really hard trying to help some people, because they don't have internet. And they don't have devices, they're perfectly good students. There's two different ones and they're in two different schools and they would do well, but how can they do that? And so we've got, and that's one of the things that we've done here at Pine Tree, is we, we bought hotspots. We bought Chromebooks, we make it to where they can check them out, take them home and they can do it. And I've checked back with them later on and they are just, the mom's just excited. She was working two jobs and her kids, now she's working one job, she can come home and help them. And it's like nine day, they're able to do stuff, they're able to go learn, they're able to check books out online. So there's, those are the things that we need help. So when the state starts talking about, we're gonna give you money for this, money for that, well, give us money for stuff that we can make a difference on.
Right, because the money that they do give us, I mean, it's, it's, it's allocated for certain things and out of that, you can't use them.
And I don't even have a problem, you know, obviously, everybody, you know, the mantra is teachers don't make enough. That's right, they don't, everybody knows that, but I don't know too many teachers that ever get into this, because they wanna be rich. So if you come in and you say, okay, we're gonna give you a bunch of money, but you gotta give it to the teachers, okay, well, that's fine, but that's not helping.
Yeah.
You know, because all you're doing now, you start attracting people that are getting into it for the wrong reasons. They're not getting into it, because.
And, 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 and the, the rhetoric that they, they, they gave the schools, districts, everyone, from what I hear, everyone's, it's just, just a big old blob. I mean, it's, and it, and it's set up for manipulate.
And, and, you know, it's just like, we've hired teachers away from Longview that make six thousand dollars a year more over there, but they came here because.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And so that's, that to me is more important. I don't wanna work someplace, I mean, it's just like, as I said, I retired from Easton, I could've made a lot more money going to Houston or Dallas or many number of places. I didn't want to, I wanted to raise my kids here, I was happy. I don't, you don't have, people that have the right values don't have to be rich. They just, they have the right values, they have their heads in the right spot. And that's, that to me is, is what I see when I see teachers. Most teachers I see, they got their head up right. And so, you know, I have a lot of respect for that. And, and to me, the issue is, they would rather, that's why teachers pay money out of their own pocket, because they would rather help those kids than, you know, get a few extra dollars.
And going back to what you said, I mean, when, when the kids come in, you know, from a broken home or from, or even if they do have both parents, but. They're too busy working or, or they don't have that, uh, mentality of how, they don't realize how important education is, or they weren't read to when they were, or little.
Or they're going to crack in.
Yes, so they come in with a disadvantage from the get-go, from the very beginning. And so, I mean, I, I do understand and, and believe that the greatest, uh, impact is, 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 is done at school and with teachers and, and the classroom. Uh, but at the same time, when you put them, you know, when you put them all in line and, and some, you know, some kid came in from a family that, that the parents read, read them. And, and, and they use, uh, you know, better vocabulary than the kids, that's gonna be a disadvantage, for sure.
Well, and, and the whole point of, part of our, and I was, I was one of the, I pushed really hard back when Dr. Farlow was here. For the parent liaison, which I basically said, it's a social worker. I want somebody that can go to that home and find out what's going on. And the example I gave was, we had a, we had a girl that she had fallen asleep.
So before that, we didn't have, we didn't?
Not before I, no, I think it was twenty seventeen. Yeah, cause twenty sixteen's when I got back on. And I pushed real hard and the answer I got was, well, we've already got male role models and people that are carrying, you know, they're called coaches. I said, they don't start until fifth grade. Well, yeah, so that's true. So I wanted parent liaisons down at the elementarys, I wanted them down. And so we hired, the first one we hired was for one through four. We didn't get one for, I don't believe we got, I don't believe she did, uh, primary. Uh, I'm pretty sure it was elementary. But the issue, the, the example I gave was the little girl that was falling asleep in class and everybody thought she's just a slug, you know, she doesn't care. I think she was in fourth grade. And, uh, come to find out, her mom was working two jobs. They had a five-year-old, she would come home from school, she cooked dinner for her mom, she washed the clothes, she cleaned the dishes, she'd do everything she needed to do. And at ten o'clock, after they got the baby down, she would start trying to do her homework. And then she'd have to get up at five in the morning to help mom get ready to go and get the baby off to the thing. And so she was being, at ten years old, or whatever, yeah, I guess she was ten. And, uh, by the time she came to school, she was exhausted. So this is not a kid that's a slug, this is a kid that needs help. But you don't know that if you don't follow up. Until, until you have a parent liaison that can go to the house and find out what's going on, what, you know, what's wrong, Suzie? Well, you know, baby's sick, so, you know, she's, he's staying up all night, so I'm having to stay with him, because mom's gotta get her sleep, but she's got two jobs, you know. You know, you just, now, I don't have an answer to how we help, other than we have talked to, and that to me, part of the school board, of course, is I should be talking to other people in the community. Say, okay, what can we do to help? What do you have, what services do you have that can help? And so once we start, and as, as I said, the one thing I've ever agreed with Hillary Clinton is it takes a village, is that we really all have to work together to take care of each one of these. Because the issue's not so much that somebody reads to them all the time, that makes a huge difference. But if they don't have a home life, if they're ten years old and they're already being thrust into an adult situation, they're doomed if we don't help them. We don't, cause nobody knows that that's happening. So eventually they give up, I mean, she's like, I can't, because they get labeled in schools as a, you know, well, you're just, you're just a slacker, you know. And so that, they get told over and over and then it becomes their reality, because if you keep repeating to somebody you're not any good, they eventually believe it. Uh, so that to me is where you have to get the extension of the school, because the school bay is, you know, say eight to three. But if we know, hey, we need a little help here, then we might could be, and that's where you get to people like Mr. English and some other people, who try to get out there to the homes and try. That, that's a different mentality, that's a different kind of approach. And that to me is the, this potential to help public education, because you don't have that problem in charter schools. You know, not too many, you know, parents that are working two jobs all by themselves and don't have any money and they go to charter school, it isn't happening.
That's true. Um, so, so you think, in, in, in yours, from what you're, uh, saying, and I, I agree a hundred percent. You know, the, the funding is, is poorly allocated, they should, you know, we should target the, the social aspect of the kids, because that's gonna be very fundamental. And, I mean, that's where everything stems from.
We have to address the social, the, 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 uh, the, the home environment, the, uh, you know, how, how. Part of the problem that we have is, East Texas doesn't drive the funding. Funding's driven by Houston, Dallas, El Paso, Austin. They're, the big, the big school districts are where a lot of these rules are made. They make the rules, e- even some of the rules that come, fall down on us, you know, they say, well, they do put limits, like you have to be in accounting that has a million people. But in most cases, they come up with some rules and it's because they've seen some things in Houston that didn't work, or they've seen some things. I don't want free money, I don't want them to just give me this, you know, I'm gonna give you a million dollars, do whatever you want with it, because that's too easily abused. But I think they need to recognize and somehow target the, uh, the nuclear family.
Right.
That we don't have anymore. We don't, we no longer, in fact, that last I heard, uh, I, I was floored the other day, I read something that, that there's a group that came out and said, nuclear family is racist. It's just, just saying, nuclear family is racist, you know. It used to be, and when I grew up, it was mom was home with the kids, dad worked, you know, and, and that worked pretty well.
Traditionally.
But now, I, I recognize, it's just like, you know, both my kids, mom and dad both work. Uh, but they still have time to read to the, I was showing something to, uh, Dr. Cedars from a minute ago about my. I, I joke about my grandkids, cause everybody loved their grandkids and their great kids. But I've got, they're, they're really good and they're really good math, like, really good math. The, the middle one broke IXL. They actually, they, and he was leaving first grade and the IXL, the teacher had to call IXL, because they couldn't figure out how to score it. He scored a five in his math, leaving first grade. The littlest one, I just showed him a video, just turned five. And the middle one is quizzing him and he says, seven squared. And the, and the, just turned five says, forty-nine? Eight squared, sixty-four? He goes all the way to, and, and then he turns to his mom and he says, mom, mom, what's one plus two plus three plus four plus five plus six plus seven plus eight plus nine plus ten plus eleven plus twelve plus thirteen plus fourteen and fifty? And she said, uh, buddy? And he said, a hundred and twenty, mom? But I told Eric, I said, he's been on Netflix with a thing called, uh, Number Blocks. And it's made a big difference in how, and I explained to him how, cause I've watched it with him and I see it's pretty, it's very visual in how to take numbers and put them together. Well, that's great, but if you're, don't have Netflix, you don't have Number Blocks. And so those are the kind of things that a, a family, even, even when both of them were, they can't be there, but they can put Netflix on and put Number Blocks on and say, watch this. And then she went and bought some Number Blocks, so that he could actually do what they're doing on TV. That's the big difference to me, that if somehow we can capture that, you know, maybe. Set up something after school for them, which is part of the reason that we came up with the SEER program. It's part of the reason that we came up, you know, I mean, we have GT, we have robotics, we have SEER. Those are the kind of things, we're trying to come up with other.
Where I think, where I think it, there's, there's a big potential, that it's not, it's not new. And it's not like, no, everyone doesn't know it or realize it. Everyone knows about it, everyone realizes, and, and it's something that's disposable to everyone. I just don't think that, um, I'm, I'm, I'm with the mentality that, uh, you know, it's kinda like saying, it's kinda like saying, you know, like the old saying, we use ten percent of our brain. But, you know, that kinda thing. So I think that the, 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 the gap that the schools have, um, besides, besides the, um. So I wrote this paper on, uh, it's called, I titled it, "The Positive Communication Gap." Positive communication gap is basically what you were saying, that, um, you know, kids need that, uh, positive reinforcement, that celebrating little things. And, and things that a lot of times they don't get at, at home, but also we want them to get, get at home, get everywhere. Because that basically motivates them to, to do well. That's apart from the, from the social, I, I totally agree with, with you.
But it's part of the social.
It's part of it.
It's part of it.
So, but, but the way, the, the thing that I was thinking about was, uh, you know, the, uh, the, you know, what we see in, in the internet. They love to be on, on the devices, but schools, I think, and it's something that could slowly take, take traction. But, um, you know, basically, uh, I guess tutorial videos or, or lesson videos of, of, uh. Could be, uh, a teacher reading, could be a student reading, a parent reading. Uh, so you have this parent who's a wonderful reader, or a teacher who's a wonderful reader, and you put it in a, in a, and, and so you have, the school district sets up this webpage within their, their. Their, uh, web, their page, and the kids and the parents and everyone knows to go there. And then there, you're going to, uh, find, uh, someone, a video, someone reading this book or reading, or, uh, a mini reading lesson or mini, uh, math lesson or this and that. And the students can go in there and, uh, uh, it's kinda like a hub where they can go in and find all this, uh, wealth of information, wealth of, uh. And then, and then the other thing is, um, to have them also be able to upload. Not, not by themselves, because you never know, you know, they can upload things that are bad, but have some, some kinda control where they send, they upload it and then someone sees it and says, okay, this is good. And so, excuse me, they love to see, they love to see each other or themselves on TikTok, on, on, on Facebook, on Snapchat. That's their thing, they love to do that. And, um, and if they can see themselves or other friends, like doing a problem or reading, in other words. In summary, basically bring the, what they already love to do. Use that tool, bring it into the academic side and put a little bits and pieces of the academic, so that they can, uh, uh, it, it's a tool that we could, we could use.
And I agree, and I, I, but I'm gonna give you two challenges to that. And not because I don't, I agree with you, but there's, one challenge is Johnny's at home by himself, how do I do that?
That's true.
You can't, there's no help desk, you know, there's no, I mean, I don't, I can get on the internet, but, and I can do Facebook, that's my friend showed me, or I can do TikTok or whatever. But how do I log into the school? Somebody's gotta, and, and I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying that's one of the challenges, one of the hurdles is, first of all, they gotta have internet, which in a lot of cases, that's a hurdle.
And computer.
Then they have to have a device, which phones don't usually work. And so now, once we get them into that, then we have to get. And so now, once we get them into that, then we have to get them to where they can learn how to do that. And, and that's a good thing. But we actually got a push pile when we started doing something, I think, a year ago, on some of this about reading, and some readings programs, because we were doing it in English. And some of the Hispanic fa- parents came and chided us, because we were interfering with their culture. We don't, we don't, we don't want our kids speaking English at home. We all speak Spanish, because that's our culture. And we tried to explain to them, that's great, but that ain't the way the world. And they actually got mad, because it was, well, who are you as a school to tell us how to trade raise our kids? And the answer is, your test is gonna be in English.
That's right.
Whether you like it or not, the test is in English. And see, we were finding, we were having some issues, because some of the kids, we, we actually, I think it was 2016, there was a disparity between Birch and Parkway on the math scores. A pretty big disparity. We said, okay, what's going on? How come, how come Parkway's doing so much better than Birch? Well, we found out Parkway was reading the questions to the kids, Birch wasn't. So the disparity wasn't in math, it was in reading. Neither one of the kids could read the English very well in assembly. But because somebody was reading it to them, they could grasp it a little better and do the math a little better. So it turned out that the reading, the reading English part was what was... So it's kind of interesting, as you go through some of these things, because it's like, okay, we gotta handle that. And we gotta get them bought in, and that's why, you know, we hope to have teachers that have the same culture, come support it and say, this is the way it needs to be, and here's why. I understand what you're saying. We're not trying to take your culture and change it. We're just trying to say, the reality of life is this.
I mean, it's, it's, uh...
That was kind of amazing, because you don't even think about, I mean, we never even considered that being something that was offensive. Why would it be offensive? We're teaching the minimum. Oh, that's a bad thing. It's like, what?
Yeah, that, that bothers my mind, because, because, I mean, uh, and, and I think, uh, uh, you know, those, those, those kind of parents are those parents, because I, I'm pretty sure if you, if you took the, the, uh, I, you know, a, a, a questionnaire to all of the, uh, Hispanic parents, most of them would, wouldn't have a problem with it, but you have, always have a few here and there that...
And these were actually fairly well-educated ones. This was not...
That's even worse.
Yeah, these were fairly well-educated. They had, in fact, I, I ended up having a discussion with one of them after the meeting. I encouraged him, he had a, he had a really good friend that worked at Eastman, and who happened to be a good friend of mine. Actually graduated from A and M with me. And I said, well, go ask him what he thinks about me. Because if I'm telling you something, you go ask him, but Jim's telling you this, is it a good thing? And I never heard from him again. So I sent me one and asked him. He said, what about this Serrato guy? I said, yeah, Jim's telling you, that's probably what you want to do.
I mean, it's, it's, uh, like, I mean, it's, it's, it's something that, that, uh...
But those are good ideas. And see, those are the kind of things, when you have, when they do the surveys, those are the kind of things, if you can write them up, I mean, obviously you don't have to worry for the surveys, but, you know, those are good opportunities. But if, other times, I mean, you just send something to Eric, and say, hey, what about this? Can we do this? Is there a way of doing this? And I mean, they are pretty good, but the nice thing about the administration we have now is, they don't have tunnel vision. They recognize that there's, there are a lot of problems, uh, balancing them, you know, within the constraints that we have. Sometimes takes unique solutions. So, you know, let's think outside the box at it. It's not, it's not the issue. We used to have a problem years ago. I mean, like I said, uh, obviously, I don't have anything against the previous administration, but they were in a box. I mean, they really were in a box. I had a lot of discussions with them that, uh, I just made my mind hurt. Because I'm just logical.
And, and, and it was discussions about, like, like finance, why are we fine, why are we...
Now, most of my discussions were about why our scores were crap. And the answer was, oh, well, we're working on it. Okay, no, that's not an answer. Well, we have all kinds of good ideas. Okay, that's not an answer. What are we doing specific? And I finally had a big discussion with them one day. It was really kind of an interesting discussion, because every, all of our scores, so... Uh, and again, you, you've been around engineers, you know, we're logical, and we don't have very much personality as far as...
Show me the data.
And so once I, I said, look, let me just make a deal. Let's just fix reading. Don't, I don't care about science, writing, history, let's just fix reading. Let's just target reading. Now, we know we're gonna target it. Here's the number. What are we gonna do? And then I, that was before they actually got into SMART goals, but I, yeah, had a, a zillion dollars of training at Eastman. It was like, I need to know specifically, here's where our scores are, here's where the state average is. How about we set a target that says we are gonna get from here to here by this date? And then, now tell me how you're gonna do it.
Goals and objectives.
And so, once we start now, the nice thing about when Mr. Clarkson came in, I have to have that conversation. Harry knows all that stuff. He, he can, in fact, when I ask questions now at the board, and I said, okay, why? You know, it's like, uh, Mr. Connolly, this is two years ago, I guess, the last time we were able to really talk about. He said, well, you know, we dug down on the reading numbers, and it turned out that on question seven, African-American males consistently missed that one. And that's what hurt our overall numbers, because our overall numbers got bumped by this one subgroup that ended up, and, and what we decided was, after we looked at it, and we talked with more amongst ourselves, we realized that their culture was not able to grasp the way we were teaching. We were teaching to the masses, but that subculture could not, so we have to adapt a little bit, and being able to get it to where they're able to grasp it to. That's the kind of answer I want, you know? Because just saying we're working on it doesn't do me any good at all. But when you tell me, we looked at the data, and say, we know it's, this question really killed us, because the Pareto Principle says twenty percent of your stuff is gonna give you eighty percent of the bang for the buck. That's a, I don't know if you've ever heard of Pareto Principle, but it's a pretty good, pretty good measure that, in any, any given thing, any given problem, you'll get eighty percent of the benefit if you just address twenty percent. You just gotta figure out what twenty percent it is, you know? What twenty percent of all the possible things you can address, because there's thousands of things out there. But if you address that twenty percent, you'll get eighty percent of the good out of it. And that's actually been proven out through the years. It's a pretty good little, uh, tool to, to use, because the trick is find out at twenty percent. There's a lot of, and, and that's one of the things that, there was a lot of training about how to do that. And because what you said earlier is exactly right, performance management. Uh, I have a, I have a book that is one to, a gentleman just took over a new business. He's trying to figure out how to do performance management. I said, okay. There's only one chapter on negative reinforcement. The rest of the book's on positive reinforcement. And that's how you're gonna get, uh, when my son was in first grade, maybe, he talked too much. I know, that's just not a surprise, after you've listened to that, my son would talk too much. But the way they had it set up, we had little tickets. You had five tickets. At the end of the week, you had your five tickets, you got a pizza party. By Tuesday, my son had no tickets. And this is the way it was. And they had a meeting with us and talked to us and about it. So I went home and I made him a star chart. And I said, okay, here's the deal. Every day you come home, you haven't lost a ticket, you put a star on. If at the end of the week, you get five stars, then you get, I'll take you to...
Chuck E. Cheese.
Chuck E. Cheese. Well, yeah, I think the first week it was, uh, maybe, uh, very clean. And then the second week was Chuck E. Cheese, and the third week was...
Say increment.
And, until you do four weeks, and then we start all over. And he actually, because you have to have buy-in from it, he actually said, well, you know, Chuck E. Cheese is better for me than this. So how about third week is Chuck E. Cheese, and the second week is putt-putt?
Yeah.
It's okay. Yeah, whatever he thinks. Every day he thinks, put these little stars on. After about a month, the teachers called us.
What's going on? What are you doing?
That's what they said. They said, what, what, what happened? And I explained to them, performance management. And I said, what you had was destined to fail. Because as soon as he lost one ticket, no reason to not lose the other four. Because he knew mom was gonna get his treat. So mine, there's an incentive to keep each day a gradual growth, and, and, and they were just, I mean, there was two teachers, and they were taking notes. I said, yeah, it's no big deal, but, and this was long before I was on the school board. But it was literally, that was the performance management that we learned, that taught us how to, because we're doing it for money. I mean, obviously, you know, Eastman was, we're not a nonprofit. We're out there, and there were big books to be made by doing the right kind of performance management. And so, uh, it was funny, because after the second duration of that, my son came home, and I said, so, have you got a star? He said, you know, Dad, I really don't need to do this anymore. I'm good. And it's okay. And he didn't, and he never lost another ticket the rest of the year. He didn't need the star chart anymore. He was good. Because we had changed his behavior pattern. So it was kind of interesting to watch through the years.
That's interesting that he, he said that.
He came to me and said that. And see, that's what you're looking for. That's the kind of growth that you want, that they recognize, I'm a better person, I don't need this. And, and that's where you're trying to get those, the students to where, which is what they do, like I said, now in the elementaries. They're working so hard to convince them, I'm better than you.
That's basically self-awareness, and that self-awareness and being, you know, conscious of what you're thinking, or what you're doing, and, 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 and why. And, and then also, most importantly, that you don't necessarily need to do that. You could, you could change it. You could...
You can change your behavior. You, you are in control of you. And that's the hardest thing for most of these kids to understand, because they're a product of their environment.
That's true. That's so true. That's, that's one of the things that, that I, um, not a long time ago, but a few years ago, I, I had that always in my mind. I'm like, you know, you have, uh, you know, you have a seed, and the seed is, is dead. It's basically, it's, it's, or, or if you have a seed and you put it in rocks, or, or, or bad soil, it's not gonna grow. So you need, you know, you need, you need the sun, the water, the, the right soil, the ingredients in the soil. And all those factors, you put all those factors, it doesn't matter what seed you throw in there, it's gonna grow. And so that's basically what you're, what you're saying. Um, that's very interesting, um...
Did I even answer what you need to make sure you covered?
Uh, no, it's just that, um, let me see, uh...
As you can tell, it's quite a different conversation than you had with Frank and Aaron.
No, but I, I like it. I, I, it's, with every, and I'm pretty sure the school districts will, uh, uh, you know, come around, because it's very, if, if we wanna use the, the internet, like I said, there's a lot of road, there's a lot of negative things, uh, tacked to the, to the internet. But hopefully, in, in, you know, in the near, or near the future, we can, uh...
Well, we're kind of in that vein already. I mean, I think...
Yeah, we're, we're in the baby steps.
We're one to one at the high school, I believe.
Yeah, you know, I think Todd talked about, you know, hotspots and stuff like that.
Well, we have a bunch of hotspots we bought. And that's the reason we bought them, is because there's a bunch of kids that just don't have internet. So instead of doing it, we did it with hotspots. And that was also a, a technology allotment that we got. I don't know if it was fed, or, I think it might have been fed, like, some of it with COVID, some of it not. Uh, but yeah, there's, and that's available. So if you've got kids that don't have internet, there are ways to get around it.
And I'm sure the families and the kids know about that.
I think it's done through the library, but I don't know that for sure. I do know that the ones at the high school knew about it, because it was done, check them out through the library. I don't know how they're doing it, but they, you know, it may just be junior high and high school right now, but I'm not sure.
Well, um, I know you have to go, but, um, it's been a really interesting, uh, conversation. I really, really enjoyed it. We hit a lot of topics, which is good.
Well, hopefully I helped, like I said. I'm not shy, as you can tell.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it, and, um, you know, I appreciate that you're, uh, it, it, I, I, I was looking, you know, doing some investigation with the, uh, the tax department, and I saw that you were also on the board of, of...
Appraisal District.
I was like, wow.
Yeah. And that was part of, because we didn't like the way the appraisal district was doing things, so we happened to post, we were, you know, we had to do something over there at the same time, and you sent two people over there today, it's like, what's going on?
Hey, if you don't like what's going on, that's the best way to...
They work for us, so, appraisal district is, it works for the entities.
Now, and, and real quick, does, does the, um, does that, does, does the, does the, um...
The board, the board of the appraisal district, our job is to...
Does the board, does the board have the same power as the board?
No, no. The board of the appraisal district, uh, our, our role is to approve the budget, and hire, fire, and evaluate the chief appraiser. That's pretty much what they do. We have, we do nothing with, uh, that.
But that's pretty, that's...
Pretty, yeah, pretty important. Because if you don't like what's going on, you know, the, the chief appraiser that's there now isn't the same one that was there when I got there.
Chief appraiser would be equivalent to what?
That's who, the super king.
That's the CEO.
That's the CEO. That's who runs the district. That's who answers to the board. And so the board gets to have some direction.
So, and then real quick, how, how, why, why, I mean, I, I know it's kind of like an obvious answer, but why does it under value? Usually the value, uh, goes, you know...
Well, the value is actually, the, the appraisal district's job is not to make up values. Their job is to track values. Their job is to be within ninety percent of the actual value. They do that by comparing. They do that by, they get every sale that they can get, and they look and they say, okay, in Wildwood, houses are selling for this much based on this month, and then they can make adjustments. They have programs that go in there to do appraisals, like, you know, if, if three houses sold, they can look at the square foot and the tact of that, and then, and they can come up with a value on all the other houses around it. And that's where they come from. If you don't like it, there's, there's courses, there's recourse. You could go in there, and you can protest.
And our, 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 our funding basically comes from, right now, more, more than ever, from the ABA. Uh, and then, and then, um, some from the evaluation, uh, evaluation, and, uh, and, uh...
Well, the evaluation is very important, because it does have the fact, it's actually a great, and that, and that number also sets you up. Yeah, but what happened here in, um...
This is a long time.
And, 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 uh, this, this new, uh, manager... All right, uh, with that, I don't know who this is. And, and there's a couple of... Well, yeah, because they, they limit how much, if you have a home state, it can only go up so much per year. So even if my, like in Long Beach, right now, houses are going up seventy percent a year. Because it's such a hot market. So many people are moving here from California and Oregon and all those places. Property buyers going up seventy percent. They can't raise my value of my house seventy percent a year. Yet by law, they can only raise it either ten, it was gonna be two and a half. I think they'd set it at ten, but, because, because it's a home state. So that also puts a strain on, you know, if, if school district, if the value's really, this shouldn't be this much, but it's not. Then the other half of that is, I'm holding sixty-five, so my, my, ninety percent. They're very high in, you know, many dollars. I don't care. I think the same happens.
And the other factor is that, uh, that then feels a, a bit...
Right, because they don't have those limits.
I heard that Eastman has like a good chunk here and there. I mean, they're divided into different...
Yeah, and they're mostly all, that's why I also would have some money. See, Hallbrook, I heard, because Trinity was somebody that shut down. Oh, no, they shut down. I don't like that. And so they, they're playing on my money, so, that's the problem with that, is they...
But that's why, like Houston and Doug, that's, I find it... Appreciate it, man.
Maybe you have, sorry, maybe someone...
No, no, you're good.
Okay, let's go. End stream.